Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in the name of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Abazaneda.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Perlatonda.
Here.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
And Counselor Recupero. Ten members present, one absent. First thought of our business is a resolution introduced by Counselor Garcia and all members of the City Council. Whereas the Walnut Street Synagogue, home of Congregation Agudis Shalom, is a living Jewish historic landmark that has been serving the Chelsea community for 110 years at the corner of Walnut and Fort Streets. And whereas Jews from Eastern Europe began to arrive in Chelsea in the late 1800s to escape persecution and find a better home for themselves in their offspring in America, and whereas their first prayer group was organized in 1887 and eventually evolved to form Congregation Agudis Shalom, their nearly completed synagogue was consumed by a grape fire of 1908. And whereas the present building was built at the same site in 1909 and was thought to be in the largest synagogue in New England and is the oldest remaining synagogue in Chelsea, and whereas the Walnut Street Synagogue was added to the National Register of Historic Places in 1993, and whereas in a special tribute bridging the history and future of this iconic immigrant city, we will honor the Chelsea Jewish pioneers and their descendants who are building for the future by establishing the Chelsea Jewish Museum and Cultural Center. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, do hereby recognize September 15, 2019 as Founder's Day and wish to thank the Walnut Street Synagogue for being part of our community for 110 years.
Chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
Thank you. I need your motion. We'll have to unanimously under suspension if there are no objections, and I wish to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. So first of all, welcome, everyone. I know it's been a long time, and we've been out for recess, and it's so exciting to be here to celebrate the contributions of citizens of our community and folks who have decided to make Chelsea their home. And it's so special to have a group of people that have decided to make Chelsea their home for 110 years and even longer. I live in District 5, and I am a proud City Councilor of this region, and obviously we host and we are home to the beautiful synagogue that's located in Walnut Street, which is literally right across my house. And for me, it's a great honor to present this resolution to all of the members of this congregation and everyone who attends this temple, especially because synagogues are more than just a spiritual place. They, for many reasons and for many years and centuries, it's been proven that these temples become home for people and a safe haven whenever they're afraid or whenever they're seeking counsel or help or light or aspirations or motivation. So for me, it's a great honor to have you all in my district and to have you at Walnut Street for all this time, and it is an honor to present you with this resolution on behalf of myself but also on behalf of my colleagues here for the City Council. And also, I want to take a moment to invite everyone that's watching and everyone that's here. There will be a celebration on September 15 from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Walnut Street and the synagogue there, which is a beautiful temple. You won't miss it. It's real, it's near the Williams School. So without further ado, I'd love to present this resolution to the members who are here.
We have a celebratory resolution introduced by Counselor Leo Robinson and all members of the Chelsea City Council. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15, the Chelsea City Council recognizes the contributions made and the important presence of Hispanic and Latino Americans to the United States and celebrates their heritage and culture. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, they have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas there are more than 4,700,000 Hispanic-owned firms in the United States supporting millions of employees nationwide and contributing more than 600 trillion, that's it, looks like a trillion, in revenue to the economy of the United States, and whereas an estimated 200,000 Hispanics were mobilized for World War I and approximately 500,000 Hispanics served in World War II, and whereas more than 80,000 Hispanics served in the Vietnam War, representing 5.5% of individuals who made the ultimate sacrifice for the United States in the conflict, even though Hispanics comprise only 4.5% of the population of the United States during the Vietnam War. And whereas approximately 148,000 Hispanic soldiers served in the Korean War, including the 65th Infantry Regiment of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico, known as the Borincaniers, the only active-duty segregated Latino military unit in the United States' history, and whereas Hispanic Americans are dedicated public servants holding posts at the highest levels of the government of the United States, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council does hereby support September 15 to October 15, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages participation in this special annual tribute by learning and celebrating the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. Counselor Robinson.
I'll talk this unanimously under suspension, and I'd like to present it to my colleagues here.
Thank you, Counselor. You really want to present it?
Yeah, I want to present it to my colleagues. You're a servant, aren't you?
Okay, so what do you wish us, what do you wish for us to do?
Go down and take a picture.
Let's do it.
All right?
Thank you, Leo.
We have a public hearing on the off-street parking requirement of specific uses.
So this is a public hearing on the off-street parking requirement of specific uses?
Anyone wishes?
Anybody that wishes to speak about the off-street parking require, the order that was proposed, now would be the time to come and address us. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the off-street parking requirements. Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed.
We now have a scheduled public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments on inclusionary housing.
So this is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments with respect to inclusionary zoning. Anyone that wishes to speak on inclusionary housing zoning ordinance, just come up to the microphone, right up here, on the other side, yeah? State your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes.
And whether she opposes it.
And if you can clarify whether you oppose it or you support it.
Okay. I don't know the resolution, so I'm not, I'm not sure where I stand in regards to it. My name is Susan Backstrom. I'm a, I live at 260 Clark Avenue, apartment 807, and the inclu, I just wanted to make my, my feelings known to the, to the City Council here, to, and to the public. The, usually these things are divided into 80, 50, and 30% of the, of the poverty level of the city, or, and, and as, as it pulls up towards 80%, it, no, it, not, not of the poverty level, but of the, of the median income. And so as it pulls up towards the 80 percentile, it becomes prohibitive for people of different, different abilities to pay for rent. I mean, rent should, for all intensive purposes, be 1/3 of your income. I mean, to have a normal standard of living, we need to be able to have rent stay within that, that bracket of 1/3 of your income. And if your income isn't, isn't the way the rest of the metropolis's income is, it will, the 80% will be too high, 50% will be prohibitive, and 30% is really the best possible number for the, for people of, of, of limited means. And so there is, there's a need for that to be like the, the standard for, for housing. As people, as people try to, as people do their, create their, their buildings, to have, to have them all in one place is important also, and to have them all created with the same materials is important. But to have them decidedly stay within the 30 percentile, that is, you know, that is my feeling on this, and that is the way I, I guess it would, it would be only fair for, you know, especially if you're, you're putting into effect a penalty for, for not having the affordable housing. I mean, to, to live in public housing is, is one thing, but to live in housing that is created by, or is built by a speculator, a landowner, and, and, and a builder, you know, you've got, you've got a, you really have so many more people involved that you need to, you need to really have it sort of capped at that level. That's my feeling on the subject. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Let him speak from there.
Can we bring the microphone to him?
I don't know if she can.
Can we?
Tom's, Tom's, your microphone work there? Yeah.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, hello, good evening, everybody. Alexander Floyd Vargas, I'm over at 260 Clark Ave. as well. We know that that's the Margolis Apartments of the Chelsea Housing Authority. So what I'd like to say is, I wasn't always in a wheelchair, I wasn't always having, I was born with cerebral palsy, which affects my legs and my joints and tendons and all that. But the other question is, I've lived in many different cities, and you want to try to be as, as equitable and as fair as possible, and if you, I've noticed, not only my personal experience and the people that I was, I was living with in different cities, but if you have too much, too many renters or too many, too many market forces making people pay 80 plus 90 plus another, you know, I mean, I even had landlords that were trying to make me pay, you know, $60 just for the lease, just for a copy of the lease. And of course, I left because I can't, even if I was healthy, I can't work 120 hours a week, every week for a year, to try to pay, you know, market rate, flat apartments or market rate box apartments with very little, you know, renovation, very little repair. I've lived in four other cities beside this one, and it was, you know, and not only, if it's 80% or more, then they can't help their families, they're going to leave, you know, you probably don't want that. Most people who are smart probably don't want that in a, in a city that the prices are so high that they'll probably leave and not come back or, or speak badly of the city. And I think that this is, you know, I think this is more of an equal-minded city and understands that not everybody can be an executive, not everybody can, you know, afford the highest-priced car and the highest price, you know. And what we want is a safe and happy city for people from all ages and all walks of life. You don't just want one extreme where you're very poor and you have no choices to very rich and you have a billion choices, if you understand what I'm saying. You know, you probably want to be as equitable as possible. And I think that if this resolution is concerning housing authorities or apartment complexes that are in desperate need of renovation, you probably don't want to kick people out. That would probably have a bad reputation, a bad memory, a bad connotation. You want to try as much as possible to be including everyone, especially if they're law-abiding citizens. You want to encourage them to work. You want to encourage them to be in the city. But if everything's too difficult and the prices are going up 800% or more, you know, compared to what they used to be, and I understand it's not going to go down, but if it gets, if it gets up too high, it's probably not, you know, that's probably not healthy for anybody, never mind a city. So if the resolution is to try to have, try to keep housing, try to keep the, the citizens in the city, and some of it is at 30%, some of it is at 80% and, or 50%, that's probably better than having everything at 80, 90, and 150%. Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think that's probably, you know, a good idea to try to be equitable so you can have everybody from all walks of life. And also helps too, because it gives them hope. And if they want to change jobs, they can change jobs. They're not going to be, you know, going, oh, I have to leave the city because the rents are too high and the tickets are too high and the taxes are too high and, you know. And I've, I've lived, I've had situations where, you know, I've had an $800 or $1,000 bill, no notice. It's, it's very discouraging.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anybody else wish to speak on the proposed zoning amendments on inclusionary zoning? Mr., go ahead, knock yourself out.
So I just want to express my support as City Manager for the proposal. I think it really strengthens our existing affordable housing ordinance by requiring now that the mandated affordable units be at a mix of 30, 50, and 80. I think it, the ordinance in that fashion will better serve the residents of the City of Chelsea. So as City Manager, I fully support this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrosino. Anybody else wish to speak on the inclusionary zoning ordinance? Going once? Going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed.
Public speaking.
Public speaking. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
My name is Roman Puckel. I live at 191 Linfield Street, PB, Mass. I'm a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post 13 of Chelsea, and I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. What I'd like to bring up is gaining entrance to City Hall after closing hours. For example, today's meeting at 7:00 p.m. At 4:30, the doors get locked. The custodians unlock the doors at 6:30. Oftentimes, the head custodian is not informed of the use of City Hall after closing. The policy should be to unmark the entrances at 500 Broadway, Washington Avenue, and the handicap entrance at Washington Avenue. Signs should be placed informing people of this. Also, doorbells would be helpful. However, I'm selfish, and I attend many meetings. I wonder if maybe I could get the cell phone number of the head custodian, and whenever the doors are locked, I could call him and request that he unlock the doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number two. Emergency management 911 communications. I could not find staff contacts on the website. I attended a meeting where the person in charge stated that at times, two persons are on duty, however, at times, only one person is on duty. Our life safety and property issue exists. Over 50% of the residents are Hispanic. It would make sense to have a Spanish-speaking person on duty at all times to minimize response times. A meeting should be scheduled with all interested parties, including a union representatives, to see what can be done, especially before the new contract takes place. Item number three. I would like to follow what work is being done in regards to Logan Airport noise. Residents of Chelsea should complain because in the past, Logan minimized traffic on certain runways when they received many phone calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking going once? Going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed.
Public speaking.
Public speaking. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
My name is Roman Puckel. I live at 191 Linfield Street, PB, Mass. I'm a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post 13 of Chelsea, and I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. What I'd like to bring up is gaining entrance to City Hall after closing hours. For example, today's meeting at 7:00 p.m. At 4:30, the doors get locked. The custodians unlock the doors at 6:30. Oftentimes, the head custodian is not informed of the use of City Hall after closing. The policy should be to unmark the entrances at 500 Broadway, Washington Avenue, and the handicap entrance at Washington Avenue. Signs should be placed informing people of this. Also, doorbells would be helpful. However, I'm selfish, and I attend many meetings. I wonder if maybe I could get the cell phone number of the head custodian, and whenever the doors are locked, I could call him and request that he unlock the doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number two. Emergency management 911 communications. I could not find staff contacts on the website. I attended a meeting where the person in charge stated that at times, two persons are on duty, however, at times, only one person is on duty. Our life safety and property issue exists. Over 50% of the residents are Hispanic. It would make sense to have a Spanish-speaking person on duty at all times to minimize response times. A meeting should be scheduled with all interested parties, including a union representatives, to see what can be done, especially before the new contract takes place. Item number three. I would like to follow what work is being done in regards to Logan Airport noise. Residents of Chelsea should complain because in the past, Logan minimized traffic on certain runways when they received many phone calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking going once? Going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Garcia.
I need your motion unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved. Communications from the City Manager. Do you want me to do chickens? Anyone do chickens?
You want to do the chickens?
I'll do chickens. We have a communication received from the City Manager regarding the raising of chickens. Dear Counselors, I'm writing in response to the City Council order requesting that I ask the Board of Health to allow families to raise chickens without any permission. My review of the city ordinances leads me to conclude that this is a matter that rests exclusively with the City Council. The current ordinance approved by the City Council prohibits any resident from owning or harboring a domestic farm animal, including a chicken, without the permission of the Board of Health. Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts, Chapter 4, Section 49. The City Council can easily eliminate the requirement for Board of Health approval if it so desires. It would merely require an ordinance change. I do caution that before making any such ordinance change, the City Council should review other ordinances in nearby municipalities and confer with such municipalities, municipalities about their experience allowing domestic chickens. I am aware that in some communities, allowing residents to raise chickens, particularly in dense neighborhoods, has generated complaints from abutters. And in at least the neighboring municipality of Revere, a previous ordinance allowing chickens was rescinded, and now the ownership of domestic chickens is expressly prohibited. See Ordinances of the City of Revere, Chapter 6, Section 602010 attached. Finally, I would suggest also some discussion with the Board of Health as to how many requests are made to wit, about how many requests are made to it for permission to raise chickens, and how often such requests are denied. It may be that the current regulatory structure of requiring Board of Health permission is working just fine and is not in need of any revision. Mr. Recupero.
Subcommittee on Conference.
Subcommittee on Conference? Under suspension. Do you want me to keep reading?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
Next communication from the City Manager, ISD overtime. I'm writing in respect, in response to the recent City Council order requesting information on overtime in the Inspection Services Department. There are basically three types of overtime that occur in ISD. The first is Friday afternoon overtime, mostly paid through the Community Development Block grant funding for inspectors to investigate code and sanitary violations in the CDBG target area. The second is Saturday morning overtime to ensure that there is some oversight of building and housing work on weekends. And finally, there is overtime that is unanticipated due to some after-hours emergency that requires the presence of an inspector, such as a problem in a restaurant, a special event, a fire, a crash that impacts the structural integrity of the building, et cetera. Both the Friday afternoon and Saturday morning overtime shifts are rotators so that all union employees are given an equal opportunity to work. When a union employee is not available for his or her rotation, they may swap or have another union employee perform the work. As the emergency work, the type of emergency will dictate who is called to respond. I have attached a list of overtime pay earned by ISD union employees thus far during fiscal year 2019. Please keep in mind that not all employees earn the same hourly rate. Also pursuant to their union contract, ISD employees sometimes opt for compensation time in lieu of overtime pay. Let me know if you will require any further information on the issue.
Counselor Lopez.
I'll accept the following communication.
Okay.
Quarterly hiring report. Dear Counselors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section 112.02, I have enclosed a required statistical quarterly report on hiring for the 12-month period from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. I'll be available to answer any questions.
Can I have a motion? Thank you, Counselor.
FY20 water sewer rate trash rates. Following Tuesday night's public hearing, the DPW Public Works Commission and I discussed the concerns raised about rising water and sewer rates. Although rising rates are inevitable when the majority of the city's water and sewer costs are determined by changes from the MWRA, and those charges rise each and every year, we are cognizant of the city's need to try to keep rate increases moderate. With that in mind, we carefully reviewed the rate-setting formula we have been using to determine if there was any leeway to moderate the proposed rate increases. Our formula is based upon historic water usage, which has been declining over the past few years. However, while some of that is due to bed-
to determine if there was any leeway to moderate the proposed rate increases. Our formula is based upon historic water usage, which has been declining over the past few years. However, while some of that is due to better water conservation by residents, we also believe that our system for capturing water usage is not beneficial. With changes instituted in the past year, including the start of the program to replace aging meters throughout the system and a better protocol for tracking water use by contractors, we have some confidence that we will be able to reduce non-billable usage. Operating on the assumption that we may be able to capture more water usage for billing, we have revised the proposed rate increases for FY twenty. Specifically, the tiers one and two, we have reduced the increase to one percent, and for tier three, we have reduced the increase to approximately four percent. I caution that with these changes to the original proposed rate increases, there is some risk that we may incur a deficit at the close of FY twenty. In that case, we will not be, we will not need to utilize reserves to cover the deficit. There is a further point to make. The DPW Public Works Commission and I both believe that we can improve upon the process for rate setting, and we plan to do so starting next year. Specifically, sometime in the late spring of 2020, we will schedule a subcommittee meeting with the city council to present our recommendations for sewer and water rates for FY twenty-one. Following that subcommittee meeting, we will advertise the public hearing to present our final determination for water and sewer rates. Of course, this rate-setting hearing cannot take place until after the water and sewer enterprise fund budgets are approved by the city council, but we commit to scheduling the hearing shortly after that budget approval. In the interim, I have committed to making a recommendation to the city council sometime in FY twenty for a more generous senior discount to be implemented in, implemented in FY twenty-one. The details of the rate increase, which will take effect on the July billing cycle, are as follows. Water rate, the new water rates are five dollars and forty-seven cents per hundred cubic foot for tier one, one to one thousand per month and cubic feet, six dollars and sixty-seven cents for tier two, and eight dollars and twenty-two cents for tier three. Again, these rates represent a one percent increase over current rates for tiers one and two and an approximate, approximately four percent increase for tier three. Sewer rate, the percentage increase for the new sewer rates are identical, one percent for tiers one and two and four percent for tier three. The new sewer rates are nine dollars and forty-seven cents per hundred cubic feet for tier one, ten dollars and thirty-three cents for tier two, and twelve dollars and twenty-one cents for tier three. Combined rate for residential customers who use under one thousand cubic feet per month and pay tier one rates, the new combined water and sewer rate is fourteen ninety-four, an increase of one percent. With this increase, the average water and sewer bill in Chelsea for FY twenty, assuming annual usage of one twenty HCF, will be one thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents, an increase of sixteen dollars and eighty cents over FY nineteen. Trash rates. On Tuesday night, we also held a public hearing on the trash rate. As I mentioned, for the past several years, we have been running deficits in our trash accounting because the rate has not been sufficient to cover the true cost of solid waste collection and disposal in the city. In an effort to eliminate this deficit, we are instituting another ten percent increase in the trash rate, a similar increase to last year. The new FY twenty trash rate is thirty-three dollars and ten cents monthly for residential property and one hundred and fifty-six fifteen monthly for commercial units and mixed buildings. Owner-occupied units remain exempt from this fee. Unfortunately, with rising costs for recycling, I expect that ten percent plus increases in our trash fee may be the norm for the foreseeable future. I am available to answer any questions the city council will have on the new rates.
Can I have a motion? Thank you, Councilor Vujaneda. I'm sorry?
I have the speaker.
Oh, you have the floor councillor.
I, along with some of my colleagues on the board, attended the public hearing that was held by the DPW on the increase of water and sewer rates. I proposed zero increase, and many of my colleagues also felt as though, given the recent increases in water and sewer rates, that the best route to take would be, you know, to send a message to the ratepayers that we understand they've had quite enough of the increases, and that we should go with a zero percent increase for this year to see what other ways we could find to cut costs and make savings. The city had proposed a four percent increase in the rates. Thankfully, the city manager and the head of the DPW dropped that down to one percent. I felt zero would have sent a stronger message. I'm not, I don't subscribe to the philosophy that you have to go up every year, otherwise people will get used to it not going up, and then you'll be, be behind the eight ball. I don't think you should increase the rates even one percent unless you absolutely need the money, and you need that to operate the water and sewer department. So, I congratulate them for dropping it from four to one percent. I hope that going forward, next year, they'll be able to give the ratepayers a zero percent increase in the water and sewer rates, because they have been going up over the last ten years, every single year. And it's gotten to the point where people can't afford to pay their water bills. It's ridiculous, it's crazy. So, I again commend them, but I hope that next year, they'll try to find a zero instead of a one.
Thank you, Councilor Bishop. Councilor Recupero.
There's something here that kind of caught my eye about the trash fee. It says, it says it's going to go up each year, ten percent or plus. That will be the norm. So, that means that within ten years, you're going to pay a hundred percent of what you're paying now. So, how can it always, each year, ten plus percent, ten plus percent on your trash? So, it doesn't say that some years they might cut it. It just says, that's going to be the normal, where the trash is going to go and stay the same. That's not sustainable all the time for the people that live here. On top of your water, you're paying your taxes, now you're paying your trash on top of your taxes, and all your water that's going up. How are we supposed to live in a city where it kills you? It's all it does. If you, you, even you, like Mr. Bishop said, the water, the water rate, it's never going to stop, it's never going to decrease. Tier three is real bad, so if you go above twenty-two thousand five hundred, you're going to get croaked. So, and how do you know when enough is enough? If you're going to say the norm for doing the trash is ten percent plus, pretty soon you're going to say, well, the norm for the water is going to be ten percent plus, because it's an enterprise fund. They say an enterprise fund, you have to put money into it to keep it going. So, how are you going to keep it going? On what? On the poor people that live here? On the poor taxpayers that are getting drowned by water? It's not just your water. You've got to count your sewer, which is twice as much as your water. And then, dear, they got one thousand seven hundred dollars increase to who? A single-family home? What happens if you get two or three family homes? Or four? Basically, two or three. What happens to them? They're going to get croaked. So, what happens is, the homeowners are going to, in return, give the rentpayers a big increase. And what are you going to do? And what happens when these rentpayers can't pay the big increase anymore? What happens to your city when they can't afford it? What are you going to do? How are you going to maintain your big budget? You can't. And eventually, it will collapse. It says, oh, it's not going to collapse now. Everything dies sooner or later if you overexert yourself. If you overcharge and overdo everything, who's going to want to live here? You're going to have a city of transients, where people can't afford to stay here more than two, three years. They're just going to, okay, I'm going to move in with ten people. After the ten people go, who's going to rent your apartment? And what are you going to do? What's going to happen to the poor landlords or the poor homeowners that have been here all these years? The ones that own big businesses, that own eight, ten, twenty units, it doesn't make a difference to them. What it makes a difference to is the poor homeowner that has tenants that live in one, two, and three family homes. They're the ones that are going to pay, and they're the ones that are going to suffer. So, it's about time we think of them, not just how much money can this city rake in to give to everybody else. Think of the people that are here. You want to keep the people here. Don't drive them out, keep them here.
Thank you, Councilor Recupero. Okay.
Next communication from the city manager, Notice of Waiver Intent. Dear councilors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one twelve point oh-two, I am writing to notify you of my intention to hire Mr. Anthony Collins, one thirty-seven West Adams Street, Somerville, Massachusetts, for the part-time position of tenants instructor and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section one twelve point oh-one. There was no other candidate for this position. A copy of Mr. Collins' resume is attached. In accordance with Section one twelve point oh-two, I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Can I have a motion? Thank you, Councilor Robinson.
Next communication from the city manager, Requested approval for increase in School Department FY twenty budget. Dear councilors, as has been the case the past few years, the final FY twenty state budget approved by the legislature and signed by the governor included a significant increase in Chapter Seventy funds for the Chelsea School Department, open above the amount originally recommended by the governor that formed the basis for the school department's original budget. The increase to the school department's budget supported by these new state funds is one thousand, one million three hundred and three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars for a revised school department FY twenty budget of ninety-six million six hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. Because of all the increase to the school department's budget is fully funded by Chapter Seventy, aid to the city, there was no adverse impact on the municipal side of the city's budget. For this reason, I respectfully ask that the city council approve the full ninety-six million six hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred seventy-four dollar revised budget approved by the school committee on August twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
Motion, anybody? Councilor Bishop?
Yes, I would make the motion that this be sent to the Committee on Conference. On the motion?
Conference or budget?
Conference.
Conference, okay.
We spent considerable time, April and May, going over the budget for the school department and the city. The city forked up additional money for the schools, because we said to the school committee and the superintendent, what do you need to function for the upcoming year? And they said, this is what we need to function and provide the programs for all of the children in our schools for the fiscal year nineteen. So, the city came up with more money. And we gave them what they were looking for, for their budget. Now, the state comes along, and they're increasing the Chapter Seventy money, and for some reason, they want to take that money and spend it, because the state gave it to us. What about the money that the city put up in addition to what they put up the year before, which I think was two million dollars year before, five hundred thousand or more this past year? Additional, you know, into what the city had, puts up for the school department. So, if we gave them what they needed to run the school for the year, why do we have to spend another one point three million to do the same thing they said they could do with the funds that were given to them? I think, I'm not looking to say, oh, let's take this money and spend it somewhere else. Let's leave it in the school department. I'm all in favor of that. But why don't we put it into the fund that requires that we maintain the buildings? We have to maintain the school department buildings. They're all twenty or twenty-five years old now. We spent considerable money in the capital improvement approval this past year to pay for the roofing of the Williams School, the roofing at Mary C. Burke, and this and that. And there are many other projects that are waiting to be done to keep the building so that the rain's not coming in on top of the children, or that the windows, wind's not blowing through the windows. So, why don't we take this one point three million and put it in the school building stabilization fund? Since we've already given them the money they need to function for fiscal nineteen. Does that make any sense to anyone? I really, you know, because the state gave it to us, we should go spend it and, you know, have more programs that obviously you didn't have to have last April and May. So, my feeling is, great that we got this extra money. Let's put it in the school stabilization building fund. So, therefore, I'm asking for a conference with the school department, and we can hash that out and see what looks like.
Thank you, Councilor Bishop.
Okay. Under suspension?
Yeah, under suspensions, and there were no objections. So, it's moved.
Okay. And next communication, Notice of Waiver Intent. Pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one twelve point oh-two, I invite to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Hiell Nancy Shen, fifteen Parkside Place Apartment, two two-three, Revere, Massachusetts, for the part-time position of music piano instructor and to grant her a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section one twelve point oh-one. There was no other candidate for this position. A copy of Mrs. Shen's resume is attached in accordance with Section one twelve point oh-two. I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Can I have a motion? Councilor Robinson moves to accept the follow communication, under suspension. No objections.
Next communication from the city manager, Notice of Waiver Intent. Dear councilors, I'm writing to notify, notify you of my intention to grant a residence and waiver to cover DPW employee John Benton Kerr. Mr. Benton Kerr has moved from Chelsea to Lynn, where he has purchased a home for his family. Mr. Benton Kerr is a valuable member of our DPW team, and we would like to keep him. In accordance with the new Administrative Code, Part Four, Section one twelve point oh-two, I request that you provide me with any comments on this proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor, yeah. Counselor Garcia moves to accept the follow communication, under suspension. Next order of business is appointments and boards to commissions. Though this requires a second reading, I get requests from people watching that they want us to read the names out, so I want to make sure that I read that out loud. Pursuant to Section four-two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Community Preservation Act Committee, Mr. Yahia Norris, sixty Prescott Avenue in Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiration in twenty twenty-two. For appointment to the Chelsea Historical Commission, Mr. Alex Balkar, Balkarsel, forty-nine Cook Avenue, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiration in twenty twenty-two. For appointment to the Chelsea Council of Elder Affairs, Ms. Rebecca Swope, twenty-nine Tudor Street, Chelsea, to serve the remainder of the term of Mr. Robert Duke Bradley, recently deceased. This term expires on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. For appointment to the Chelsea Youth Commission for a one-year term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, the following youth: Brittany Alcassad, one thirty-five Walnut, Walnut Street, from Northeast Metropolitan Vocational; Fatima Mendosa, eighteen-eight Everett Avenue of Chelsea High School; Carla Garcia, thirty-one Breakwater Drive, from Northeast Metropolitan Vocational; Fatima Prudencio, fifty-eight Bellingham Street, from Chelsea High School; Wendy Figueroa, one seventy-three Central Ave, Chelsea High School; Erica Mendosa, one seventy-seven Webster Avenue, Chelsea High School; Emily Menjivar, seventeen Lawrence Street, Chelsea High School; and Salma Jabri, fifty-nine Madison Avenue, Excel Academy. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. I have attached resumes for all of the new adult appointees. Thank you, Councilor Garcia. Under suspension.
Next communication, Notice of Waiver Intent. Dear councilors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, Section one twelve point oh-two, I'm writing to notify you of my intention to hire two non-residents for the open positions of E-nine-one-one supervisors: Anthony Fowler, fifty Center Street, Appomattoir, Fort Brockton, Massachusetts; and Nicole Janey, forty-B Lafayette Place, Salem, Massachusetts, and to grant each a waiver for the residency requirement set forth in the Administrative Code, Part, Code, Part Four, Section one twelve point oh-one. Both Mr. Fowler and Ms. Janey have considerable dispatching experience. Copies of their resumes are attached in accordance with Section one twelve point oh-two, and I request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waivers within seven days.
Councilor Robinson?
Communication, under, under suspension. I'd just like to kind of speak on this, because I, I met with the director of nine-one-one today, so I had some concerns. And he did answer a lot of my questions, I have to say, he was kind of pointed on. But my concern is the fact that we have people working in these departments, and I think it's up to these directors to be able to help our residents get to the next phase about being able to get a promotion or become a supervisor, as to stop going outside this community and bringing people in to be supervisors and overlooking people who are already here. And that's one of the things I talked to him about, was now he's being in charge with training the nine-one-one people so they can move up.
That's right.
You know, so we kind of came to that agreement today. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Councilor Robinson. Thank you, Councilor Robinson.
It's a small one.
The next communication from the city manager, dedication of Heard Spruce Park to Judah Dyer. Dear councilors, earlier this summer, I received a request from the Beautification Committee that the city dedicate the small park at the corner of Heard Street and Spruce Street to Judah Dyer. This small area would be henceforth known as the Judah Dyer Park and would be commemorated with a modest plaque or sign. Given Ms. Ms. Dyer's civic efforts in the city over the course of many years, this seems to me a meritorious request. According pursuant to the Chelsea Court of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2.3, I am writing to recommend that the park at the corner of Heard Street and Spruce Street be forever designated as the Judah Dyer Park. In accordance with Chapter 2, Section 2.3, the city council has 30 days to act upon this request.
And I have a motion. Anybody? Communication, under suspension, seeing no objections, so moved. Thank you, Counselor Garcia. There is something coming up under new business, yep. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding request to appropriate Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Funds. Dear councilors, I'm writing to request that the city council appropriate $84,834.70 in available funds from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund to assist in our existing fiscal year '20 street and sidewalk program. If approved, the appropriated funds would supplement our existing DPW road improvement line item and will be spent by the city before the close of fiscal year '20. These extra funds available for appropriation come from the recent annual distribution to the city based upon rides originating in Chelsea from transportation network companies, TNCs such as Uber and Lyft. As part of the new regulatory scheme, TNCs are required to pay the Commonwealth a 20 cent per ride assessment. One half of that assessment is distributed proportionally to each city and town in the Commonwealth based upon the number of rides that originate in the municipality. For calendar year 2018, the city of Chelsea's share of this assessment based upon TNC company rides originating in Chelsea was $84,834.70. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue has previously determined that local communities must specifically appropriate these TNC funds in order to be spent. Further, the funds must be utilized to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure. Accordingly, I am asking now that the $84,834.70 available to Chelsea be appropriated to the DPW streets and sidewalks, capital road improvements line item to be used for remaining fiscal year '20 roadway work. I have attached a draft order to accomplish the requested council action. I will be available to answer any questions from the council. Sorry?
Accept and file.
Pending an order.
There'll be a new order under new business.
Something coming up under new business. Thank you, Councilor Bishop.
Okay. Approval for DPW to pay prior year expenses.
Accept and file, laid on the table, pending an order.
I'm a little confused by the laid on the table. Is it, we're setting a filing, a communication?
There's an auto coming up.
Coming up under new business, okay, all right.
Request for appropriation for work on Logan Airport noise. Dear councilors, I'm writing to provide you with an update on some Logan Airport noise-related topics. I'm also requesting an appropriation that will allow us to gather important information related to noise emanating from the Logan runways. As you know, the city council has been requesting noise monitoring of Logan Airport traffic for quite some time in an effort to convince Massport to expand its soundproofing program. But as I've, I've explained in the past, the city has had considerable difficulty getting any legitimate noise monitoring company to conduct for the city independent noise testing for, of runway traffic. First, many reputable firms with its specialty in airport-related noise have a conflict that prevents them from working in an adverse situation with Massport. Second, firms without such a conflict have cautioned against spending funds on independent noise testing because soundproofing is an FAA reimbursement program, and the FAA will not accept independent noise testing as an alternative to their noise modeling for purposes of the soundproofing program. However, this past summer, with the help of Green Roots, the city has, has, was able to secure a pro bono proposal from the Community Noise Lab at the BU School of Public Health to do some noise monitoring in Chelsea. A copy of the proposal is attached. The community, uh, the Community Noise Lab is proposing to monitor noise by placing eight state-of-the-art sound level meters in strategic locations throughout the city. They will also gather information about noise impacts from residents through a smartphone app called Noise Score. Although this monitoring won't meet FAA standards, it may provide some helpful information regarding actual noise and its impact on Chelsea residents. And of course, it is free to the city. An initial public information session about the project will take place at Green Roots on Thursday, September 13th at 6:00 PM. At the same time, I have continued my efforts to negotiate a long-term mitigation agreement with Massport that might provide additional funding to support a local soundproofing program. Those efforts have been stalled for the past few months due in large to the leadership transition in Massport. But with the new CEO selected, I'm hopeful we can restart those discussions. Obviously, it will help our negotiating position in Chelsea if the city has more accurate information about Logan's airport actual impacts on Chelsea. Toward that end, we have been discussing with a firm from Georgia that specializes in airport noise ways that it can assist us in gathering such information. The firm ABC Times Two LLC has familiarity with Logan and has, and comes highly recommended by other municipalities facing airport-related impacts. ABC Times Two has given the city the attached proposal for examining and evaluating past studies and existing conditions at Logan, including an assessment of airspace and flight procedures, annual operations, fleet mix, and runway use. This kind of baseline assessment may help us in making our arguments to Massport for additional mitigation. Because of procurement rules, we may need to go out to the public bid for this work and could end up with a company deficient, uh, different than ABC Times Two, although any competitor would need to be of similar stature in the industry. Unlike the Community Noise Lab at BU, ABC Times Two and similar noise experts do not work for free. ABC Times Two's proposal for a baseline study is $25,000, and we expect other proposals would be in this ballpark. Because we have not previously set aside funds for this purpose, we will need an appropriation from the city council to move forward. And at this point in the fiscal year, the only source of funding in this, is the stabilization fund. Free cash is not yet available and is not expected to be certified by the Department of Revenue for at least a few more months. I have attached a draft order to use the stabilization funding if the council so desires. However, I do realize that the use of the stabilization fund for discretionary expenditures early in the fiscal year has not been a preference of this council. If the council wishes to defer this until the winter when free cash is available, or if the council is not inclined to utilize the services of a company such as ABC Times Two, just let me know. City manager.
Can I have a motion, Councilor Robinson? Something coming up under new business. Also, this, uh, this, um, communication says Thursday, September 13th, but the meeting is actually Thursday, September 12th for members of the public that did want to attend.
On the motion.
Yes, Councilor Bishop.
Here we are in September. The budget started July 1st, so we had July and August, and already we're trying to whack the stabilization fund. My honest opinion is that that would be the last place you'd go to take money from. You know, if there were no money anywhere else, you would go there. Given that last year's budget, there was over $10 million free cash. Year before, much more. Year before, more than that. And we can't find $25,000 anywhere in a $100 million budget? We have to go to the stabilization fund. My feeling is you should not make it a habit of going to the stabilization fund. You should go somewhere else. We'd be happy to move other money around wherever you'd like. I, I don't get it. Doesn't make any sense to me, anybody that knows anything about budgeting. The stabilization fund is the last place you go. The next communication coming up after this one, we're talking about gaming money and how we're sending $100,000 to the planning and development for this and $125,000 to this for that. You couldn't take 25 out of there? I can point to 25 other places in the city budget that had services last year and the year, year before that we could take that 25,000 out of, rather than go running to the stabilization fund. I think it's a bad habit to get into, and I don't know if that's what we're trying to establish. Getting us used to voting money out of the stabilization fund? I'll never get used to it as long as I'm here. And, you know, I, I would think the other councils would think twice about it also. So, I would like this to go to conference.
Yep.
So, we can sit with the city manager and discuss some other way to come up with this $25,000. It's not the issue of what the money's being used for. That is not the issue. The issue is where it's coming from. So, I moved that it be sent to conference.
Subcommittee consent. All right, next order. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding request to appropriate gaming mitigation funds. Dear councilors, during the course of the summer, the city had discussion with the Mass, Massachusetts Department of Revenue regarding the appropriate manner for handling the anticipated annual revenues received from Encore Casino pursuant to our surrounding community agreement. Mass DOR's official opinion is that in order to utilize any of these funds, the funds must be directly appropriated by the city council for the purposes outlined in the agreement. In the absence of specific appropriation by the city council, these revenues will be considered by DOR as general revenue to the city's general fund to support all city operations. Given that they will be surplus funds, they will eventually fall to the city's bottom line and surface as free cash in the following fiscal year. Because this treatment of these gaming funds as general revenue is inconsistent with the council's desire, at least based upon the votes taken in June to steer these funds to particular, particular purposes, see attached orders dated June 17, 2019, I am requesting that the city council directly appropriate certain of the funds which the city expects to receive from the Encore Casino in September. Specifically, I am requesting four appropriations. $125,000 to the DPW roadway line item, $100,000 to the Chelsea Cultural Council for Arts and Cultural Events, $75,000 to the planning and development for business, planning and development for business development, and $100,000 to planning and development for workforce development. I am willing to meet in subcommittee to discuss these appropriations in more detail, but a few comments are warranted. First, I did have discussion with Encore regarding the reallocation of $100,000 annually in roadway funds to workforce development. Encore agreed, and I expect to execute an appropriate amendment to the surrounding community agreement shortly. Second, as promised, it is my intention to utilize the first appropriation of workforce development funds to secure the services of a consultant to prepare for the city a comprehensive workforce development plan, something which we currently lack. Finally, you will notice that I have not proposed to, proposed to appropriate any of the public safety funds this year. Our current public safety line items are adequately funded for fiscal year '20. However, in the future, I do expect these funds will be fully appropriated. I have attached draft orders for these requested appropriations. I look forward to further discussion on these requests in subcommittee. Can I have a motion from someone?
Move in the subcommittee, move in the subcommittee.
Councilor Robinson moves it to a subcommittee on conference, under suspension, seeing no objections, so moved. Communications and petitions to the council.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed zoning amendments to Chapter 34, Article 5 of Street Parking Requirements. Pleasant body on, communication.
Under suspension, if there's no objections.
Seeing none.
We have a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed amendments to Chapter 34, Article 7, Section 34-156, Inclusionary Housing of the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance.
Yep.
To remove the exclusionary zoning from conference, so we can bring it to the floor and have a vote on it this evening?
What do you want to do with this communication?
Accept and file a communication.
So, we're pulling this out of conference? Any objections to this? Okay, it's before you, council, what do you wish to do with it?
Actually, uh, actually, move it to a roll call vote.
To adopt that has amended?
Adopt that has amended. I want to speak on, on the motion.
Leo, you have the floor.
Yeah, I believe this is a win for the residents of Chelsea. This has been a long time coming. We've been at this for over a couple of years trying to get this passed. The purpose and intent of, of this ordinance is to look out for the residents of Chelsea, to ensure that such housing remains affordable over the long term and that the extent allowed by law preferences to be given to Chelsea residents. The breakdown is 30%, 50%, and 80%. And that is if people are earning 30% of their income, that's what they would be entitled to pay in any new developments, or 50% if they're earning 50% or 80%. I think the overall win is that the development, if there are five units that are going to be built in a development, the breakdown would be, the first affordable unit would be at 30%, then the next would go 50%, and go to 80%. If there were like five or six units, then it would go back to the 30%, 50%, and 80%. So, I look at this as a big win for the city of Chelsea and the residents of Chelsea, and I want to thank my colleagues in regard to supporting this order.
Any other discussions? Councilor Vito?
I just want to give a shout out to my colleague and to everybody on the council for this amazing inclusionary zoning. Essentially, when we did it in the past, we were requiring new developers coming into the city to build affordable housing units, but when we left it up to them, they were only building at the 80% of AMI, which a lot of people weren't able to afford. Everybody put their head, their heads together, Council Robinson pushed this, and we were able to change it so that now we scale it, so it's 30, 50, 80. It is, it is no secret that we're amidst a housing crisis right now, and there are people on two total opposite sides right now. I think it's really important that we figure out how we meet somewhere in the middle so we make sure that we're accommodating the housing needs of everyone in this community. I was elected to serve this community and to make sure to solve the housing needs of Chelsea and not the greater region, so I'm committed to making sure that we continue to advocate for the most vulnerable amongst us that cannot afford to live in their, to not, to live in their homes. Everyone deserves the right to a home, and I want to make sure that we continue to work together and making sure that we do whatever we can and being as creative as possible and finding solutions to these housing issues here locally. Thank you.
Any other discussions?
Yes, to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Vazaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown absent. Counselor Perilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray Cooper. Ten and five and unopposed, one absent, the motion is adopted, has amended.
Okay. Next for your business?
Yep. Next order of business is the, we have a copy of a communication received from City Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the warrant for the city preliminary election September 24, 2019.
Can I have a motion?
We have an order coming up under new business, one, except and file, attach it to the order.
No objections, moved. Something coming up under new business.
We have a copy of a communication received from the City Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions approved at the September 3, 2019 Traffic and Parking Commission Meeting.
If there's no objections. Mention if there's no objections.
Okay. Second readings. Under second reading, second readings, we have the order introduced by Counselor Vito and Counselor Bishop on revised parking.
Counselor Vito?
Yes, okay. I move to be adopted by a roll call vote.
Roll call.
And I'd like to speak on it.
Okay, you have the floor, councilor.
So. I'm sorry, I'm a little rusty, it's been, it's been a while.
Off-street parking requirements.
Off-street parking requirements, the amendment. So this was an order that Counselor Bishop and I came up with. We attempted to do this at some point before, and the wording of it was just a little too tricky. Basically, what we're asking is that when developers are coming into the community and they want to build, and they don't meet the minimum requirement that they need for parking, that we make it, that we, that we ask them to enter into an agreement with the people that they're renting to, that they won't be able to park, participate in our residential parking program. We are the second denseest city in the state, we, and I understand the need to develop, and God knows I've evolved around that, but the problem that we're having is that, the reality is that with every development that's coming into the city, people are coming with vehicles. The developments come into the boards and they say, no, people are driving less, but that is not, that is not factual, and data will show that with every new development that comes in, there's an increase of registrations. So basically, what we're saying is, put your money where your mouth is. If you're going to come before us and tell us that you want to waive the parking, well then that's fine, but then your residents won't be allowed to participate in our residential parking program, because if you're telling us that you don't need parking, well then you don't need parking. And we want, I'm going to heed the rest of my comments and pass it over to my, to my colleague, Mr. Counselor Bishop from District One, but I just really think that it's really important that we try to figure out how to resolve this issue. We definitely have a problem in the community, and we're not doing enough to do something, so hopefully this will help ramp it up. Counselor Bishop?
Good, Counselor Bishop, you have the floor.
The members of this board that represent the most congested areas in the city are aware of this issue and this problem, because they deal with it every night. And people might say, well, Counselor Bishop, your area probably has more parking than any of the districts in the city. And know what I say to them? Take a ride around my district after dark, when people are home from work. It's just as congested as your area is, that's what I say to them. And why is that? Well, I'll tell you why. Because people go to this board that we have in the city, Board of Appeals, and they want to convert that two-family to a three-family, or that one-family to a two-family. And they say, well, this parking on the street, we really don't need the parking, people are taking the bus. And, you know, we're going to be fine with only two parking spaces for three apartments, or three parking spaces for three apartments. And what happens? They all wind up parking out in the street. Something has to be done. It's crazy out there, as all of you that represent those districts that are congested know. So what are we going to do about it? Well, if they're saying they don't need the parking, because people are taking the bus and they're using Uber, and they're using Lyft, and they're using this and that, then you won't need to participate in the resident permit parking program. Why should the people that have been living in that area for a good amount of time, all of a sudden lose their parking spots because you wanted to make more money and get that other twenty-five hundred dollars in rent a month, or whatever the reason might be? So you want to make this one-family into a two-family, so you can turn around and sell it for another three hundred thousand dollars? Well, good for you, I'm, you know, that's America, it's a wonderful thing. But why should the people that are left behind have to put up with the cars out on the street? It's a big problem, and something's got to be done. There's, you know, I don't think anybody would argue that, oh, everything's fine, because just take a ride around, like I said, and you'll see everything isn't fine. So I urge my colleagues to vote for this. If it doesn't work, and I don't see why it wouldn't, we can come back and change it at a future date if we need to. But I don't see us needing to, because I think this is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vina? How would you like to amend it? What would you like to say?
In the section one, after zoning ordinance, I'd like to enter from January one, twenty fifteen onward.
And I'll speak on that motion. I'm asking that the words, after zoning ordinance, be added, and the following words be added, from January one, twenty fifteen onward.
Onward?
Onward.
Yeah.
And I'll speak on that. I agree with the councilors who brought this forward, we've been arguing about these issues, and I think that despite how many councilors go and how many residents speak in front of our zoning board sometimes about the issuance of special permits, particularly when parking requirements are not met, and you're hearing those arguments, I agree totally that you have developers and builders who are saying that they don't need the parking because there is public transportation available, they, you know, the Silver Line at the time was the big argument, oh, we have Silver Line coming, and all these, and Uber and Lyft and everything else. But that didn't transpire, and the very same problems that we predicted were going to happen in those particular neighborhoods did in fact happen. And it's been building, and it's been going on for a while, so I'd like to just backdate it to, I think, the time that is fair for all the projects that have negatively impacted, back to twenty fifteen. And, and so that's my, my, my wish, that we go backward and try to address the existing problems that currently exist, and that would address many of these two-family, three-family conversions, and maybe some of the other projects that got approved. There's no right, and you don't have a right to the parking program, so to take it away is not, you know, it doesn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a legal challenge, just the same way if someone has an allowed use right now, and you change the zoning, that use is grandfathered in. So you continue to have the use as long as the building exists, but a parking program is not a zoning right, so I think that we are well within our legal standing to take away any allowance of a parking program, particularly for those who ask for a waiver from the parking requirement.
Point of inquiry?
Can we, are we allowed to, so I understand the amendment, are we allowed to make such a motion retroactively? And that would be a question more for the city solicitor if it can be answered? Through the chair.
The city solicitor coming up to clarify?
So the, I believe it's a friendly amendment, however, you cannot retroactively take away something from someone in the zoning ordinance. Zoning in itself allows changes, but going forward. So basically, those people who have already sought relief have relief, it's part of their special permit, it's part of everything that has occurred. You cannot retroactively take away a benefit that you've already granted to not just the resident who lives there, but also the developer who built, or the property owner who added the extra unit. So that would deem your entire new zoning ordinance unenforceable if you add this motion, in my legal opinion. As is, I believe it's enforceable, as the councilors have presented to you tonight.
Without the amendment, it is enforceable.
Yes.
With the amendment, it will kill the...
It could kill the entire zoning ordinance, because it's adopted as, as an ordinance altogether. I caution you to do that, you cannot retroactively take away something that's already been approved by the Z B A. In fact, you don't have any authority to take, to change a special permit or a zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair? She's done, yeah. My question is, what mechanism is in place? Because, I mean, essentially, anyone that's gotten a waiver from twenty fifteen and on, it was based on, it was based, it was based on the idea that they didn't need parking. But then, so we continue to waive these requirements, but then people are actually bringing in more vehicles. So essentially, I mean, I just don't understand how we can say that it's unenforceable when it was based on, on something that was not factual to begin with.
Well, I'm not quite sure about every single person who got zoning relief for parking. So someone who did a two-family to a three-family, saying they were going to allow family members to move in, family members could use their driveway, for example, I'm not sure that's what the basis of that particular unit in waiving of parking. Sometimes people do it because they want to put an in-law or elderly parent in there. So I can't say that every single zoning relief provided for off-street parking was to, was based on the fact that it was, people don't use vehicles, and people don't park vehicles. And I believe there might have been some developments where they say, less people will bring vehicles, hence we need less parking, or, I believe that's what they have stated. I believe there's some affordable unit developments that, where they say that there's less vehicles being parked in the area. But I don't know if you can prove that every single special permit that's been put, recorded with the property, every single change, every single variant, it was based on the fact that they, they asserted to, to the zoning board or to the planning board, that they needed the relief because they did not need the parking. Some could not provide the parking. Bishop? Yeah?
I would think it would be great if we could do that, but I kind of agree with the city solicitor that, that will kill the whole thing. We gave this some thought and talked, just a lot of discussion. We put on here effective January of twenty twenty, because this board very recently approved a project on Central Avenue that would not fit into this. So we didn't want to mess up what the board had just voted on, so we decided that we would wait a few months to put it into effect. I, like I say, it would be nice if we could do that, but I don't think we can. And insofar as the mother-in-law apartment goes, oh, my mother's going to move in there? If you sit down at that Board of Appeals meeting, every other person's telling them the same thing, hello? But what they're not telling them is the mother's moving in, but she's moving out the next month because they saw the house, they forget to tell, mention that, and the mother went with them. So that's great that you're going to have your mother in there, she doesn't drive, my mother doesn't drive, they say. You go to the Board of Appeals, it's a, it's a every-month thing down there, that people are saying the same thing, I'm making this apartment for my mother, my mother's eighty years old, she doesn't drive. Uh-oh, guess what? Mother moved out the next month, so now you've got another car that you have to do something with. So, you know, I agree with the solicitor, much as I'd like to agree with the councilor, that, you know, to make it retroactive, this is something we should have done five years ago, and we wouldn't have as bad of a problem as we have now.
I'll agree with my fellow councilors, there is a major parking problem in the city of Chelsea, but who are we to say that somebody's going to come in and buy a five-hundred-thousand-dollar condo, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar two-family house, that they can't park on the streets of Chelsea? I says, who are we to say that? I've said all along, we should build parking garages, we should change the parking program that should have been changed a long time ago. There's people parking on the streets right now that don't live in Chelsea, that work elsewhere, that park on our streets. So we don't want to change the parking program to benefit the citizens of Chelsea that live here, but we'll say that, okay, a developer can build a building, but you can't park on the streets of Chelsea. So now the developer says, okay, you have to pay three hundred dollars, five hundred dollars a month to park inside my garage, because you're buying a five-hundred-thousand-dollar unit. Well, I'm not going to buy it, because I'm not going to pay the fee. My car is registered in garage in Chelsea, why can't I park on the street? So if they're not going to park on the streets in Chelsea, then the car's not going to be registered in Chelsea, then we lose all that excise tax money. Why can't we fix the parking program itself right now that's in effect? Why can't we build parking garages? There's so many things that we can do here in Chelsea, instead we want to stop the developers that are building. We need more owner-occupied units in Chelsea, we need more affordable housing in Chelsea. You're going to tell people they can't park on the streets now? What about when I come home at five o'clock at night and there's nowhere to park because somebody from Revere or somebody else is, from other city of town is parking on my street? Are we doing anything about that? What about the cars that are parking on the sidewalks that the city doesn't want to tow, but we can spend millions of dollars, take hundreds and thousands of dollars to do sidewalks over, but we don't want to, you know, tow the car, so next year we have to do sidewalks over again? This needs to be really thought out a lot better than what it is, than tell somebody that they can't park on the streets in Chelsea.
Any further discussion? Counselor Vina?
I still feel very confident in the position I've taken. We're talking not about a zoning right, but a parking right which is not legally required as being a participant. We've had proposals in front of the city, in front of the city council, rather, by the city manager himself, to relax downtown parking to zero, stating that we didn't need the parking in the downtown. We've heard these arguments from developers and such. If this is true, then we shouldn't worry. If they're all, if everything that they're all saying is true, then we shouldn't worry. We shouldn't worry about any complaints from anyone coming up and saying, oh, now all of a sudden I don't have a right to park. Well, technically, you weren't even supposed to, your car wasn't supposed to exist, that was the argument in front of the board. So I feel confident in that. And to answer my colleague's question about, you know, who are we to decide? Yeah, we are the deciders. We set the zoning rights here, we set the parking requirements here, the buck stops here, and if the rest of the boards continue to not listen to our bosses, the residents who have been complaining for years about what they're facing all the time, then, you know what, it's time this board says, okay, we tried, we went to your meetings, we told you not to approve that project, we told you, don't give the, you know, the waiver on parking and such, don't listen to the arguments that there is no, you know, cars are not going to be coming, but they chose their path, and so now we have to fix the problems that were created by those approved projects. And I think that, again, I stand firm in believing where I am on the, you know, going backwards, and it'll all fix up. Will there be some complaints? Absolutely. But it wasn't our problem, this is where we were fit, this is where we were put in. We were put in this position based on those decisions by other boards. This is the position we were in, and we have to go back to the people who said, I, we put this forward to solve the problem that you keep on complaining about. Here's our solution. They may not like it, but that's how we got here. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
So I'm coming here to rent a unit, and they tell me that I need to sign this form that I will not park on the street. I'll be moving here and paying excise tax, and I would have a right to be able to park on the street. Now, would there be a legal challenge in regards to being able to park on the street?
I have not seen one. So there's always a legal challenge, anyone can sue you for anything. Whether or not, if you, if you took an apartment in the city of Chelsea and you were aware that you weren't going to be granted parking on your, on the property, would you be, excise tax is not just for parking, excise tax is for the use of the roadways.
Right.
There's always an argument, but I believe that the excise tax is also, is mainly for the use of the roadways. Not a lot of people actually park on the street.
Right.
For example, those of us who live in Admiral's Hill pay excise tax, but we also pay to fix our own roads. but we also pay to fix our own roads.
Anybody object to me speaking from the chair? You know, I... Okay, okay, good enough.
Item four, you wanted to change from January 1st, 2020 to January 1st, 2015 and onward? What's, Pat, you have to write it out because this is getting mixed up.
The first line, right afterwards, in zoning ordinance, from January 2015 onward, shall disqualify law lines.
So after Section 34106, JAB amended as follows, by adding, "From January 1st, 2015 and onward." I'll keep that, I'll keep that. Well, now it's up to you on advice of the council, I don't know. Ask the counselor, if she thinks it would be out of order.
So a yes vote would approve the amendment, a no vote would reject it, and then we would vote, if it doesn't survive, we vote on the original order.
Michelle, would adding this amendment retroactively nullify this order?
Not automatically, but if someone challenged it, it could nullify the entire ordinance. So this is a zoning ordinance. This is not just a regular ordinance. It's under Chapter 34.
All right, we're going to have a roll call vote. You want to clarify that? Okay. Go ahead.
This question is for you, Michelle.
Yes.
So what does this actually mean, that you're going backwards?
So I am not proposing the amendment, but it appears that the amendment would now somehow, and operationally, find every single person who has received zoning relief for off-street parking requirements in the past four years, five years, and take away their, whoever has, I guess, who resides in those units now, no longer be allowed to park on the street. The current people who have residential parking, yes.
So, in other words...
And maybe take away their residential stickers that they probably have already because we're in the middle of a year.
So what you're doing by... Well, so we're going to take this away from the people that already have it?
That's what, if you went retroactive to 2015, the annual traffic parking, I believe, is February or March. I'm not quite sure this year. So those who currently have it as of January 1, could, if we could determine who and which units by then, could lose their right to park on the street in the residential parking program. Overnight, which is just overnight.
Through the chair? Through the chair, I'll answer the question. If my amendment passes, the way it would happen is the planning department would have to provide a list of all projects that got approved after January 1, 2015, receiving parking waiver requirements. And those, just rather than January 20, it would start. The clock would have started January 1, 2015. And any special, any permit providing, any project that was approved with a parking waiver would no longer participate in the residential program, and they would no longer be able to participate as of January 1, 2020.
So we're not going backwards?
We are going backwards.
Yeah, we have it, so we're going, yeah, we're going to take it away from that.
Give me a second here. Are we putting ourselves in a situation of getting sued by all of these condo associations because now they no longer have the right to park in the street? I think I'm going to have to call that motion out of order.
It's not out of order, you just want to survive a motion.
What am I really?
It's not out of order.
Can I suggest something? Is there anybody who's... My counselor, Counselor Fundery is with this. But if we can vote on the original thing and then maybe ask the city solicitor or the planning department to come up with a list of what that list looks like, and then we can explore it further, once we have a better understanding. Because I definitely don't want to jeopardize all...
It's been a lot of projects in five years.
It's been, yeah, I think, I don't know if you're open to that, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
You'd have to withdraw your amendment. I withdraw your amendment, please.
See the all or nothing, but go ahead, I withdraw.
Withdraw.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have a roll call on the original version.
Some people want real change, and some people want it to be total.
We have a roll call. Withdrawn, okay, withdrawn, let's see.
All right. All right, so we're going to roll call.
Roll call, yes would be to adopt the... Yes to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown absent, Counselor Pilatanda?
No.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperow. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, two opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
All right. Next order of business?
New business, I believe, we're on.
We are in new business.
Okay. All financial orders have been signed by the member of the Finance Committee, Louis Tahad, in the absence of Counselor Brown.
Conference along with the letter that was sent to school conference.
When we come to that, Bob, just refer it.
You're going to do the monitor tag?
Yeah, so they don't get mixed up. Order that an increase in FY 2020, School Department, original appropriation from 90... Is that the one?
Yep.
Okay, that's the first one. What do you want, Senator Conference?
Yep.
Okay. Yep. Next order introduced by Counselor Vido, be it ordered by the City Council of the City of Chelsea as follows. Pursuant to the Court of Ordinance, the City of Chelsea, Mass., Section 2-3, the City Council hereby approves the dedication of the park at the corner of Spoo Street and Heard Street to Judith Dyer, and such parks shall be henceforth known as Judith Dyer Park. Any dedication shall be memorialized when appropriate.
Moved to adopt by roll call vote, I'd like to speak on it.
Go ahead, speak.
Not sure how many people here know Judith Dyer, but she's constantly sending emails out about alley cats and about things that are happening in the community, an advocate for the environment. And I think it is just such an honor to have someone like that in the community that I see her struggle to get around places, and she still shows up, and she's still speaking up. And I'm just so honored to be, for us as a council, to be able to do something special for her. So thank you, Judy, for all your work in the community. Thank you.
Any other?
Counselor Garcia?
I'd like to thank Counselor Vido for bringing this, along with the Beautification Committee, who also, I don't know if a lot of the folks on TV were probably not able to see this, but attached to this order, there is actually a packet with the signatures of all the residents who are supporting this cause and this park. So it speaks volumes to what already Counselor Vido has mentioned. Judith has been an incredible member of this community who has given so much and has been so selfless in that sense. And it's beautiful to really acknowledge and recognize that effort by giving her a little bit of that Chelsea love and a piece of that land. So I hope that a lot of our children who do walk by these parks and the people who do have the opportunity to enjoy it really get to know a little bit more about what Judith has done to this community. So again, Counselor Vido, thank you for bringing this forward, along with the Beautification Committee, who submitted all these signatures, so.
Okay, roll call, Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown absent, Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray Cooperow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The next financial order introduced by the Finance Committee members, Tijada, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, Budget Management Procedures whereby cost incurred in FY 18 were not paid in our own to the vendor...
We'll move that through a second reading.
Bobby? Okay. Okay. The next order, financial order, the City Council authorized appropriation of $84,834.70, as he transferred. Next financial order, $25,000 from the General Stabilizers.
Under suspension.
You have the floor.
So Counselor Bishop is moving this particular communication to a second, to a subcommittee on conference. And I understand the financial aspect of it, but I also want to bring up the first part of it. A couple of months ago, the city manager, Green Roots, and I held a meeting with Erica Walker from Community Noise Labs. And she was interested in doing a program here in Chelsea to be able to monitor some of the noise. I know Counselor Avizaneda has been a proponent of making sure that we're capturing all of the noise that we're constantly under with the planes and sound mitigation and whatnot. So they are willing to do this for free. So though the communication is talking about the ABC times two, one part that requires payment, this part would be free of charge. They would be doing the work here. There's a meeting at Green Roots this Thursday at 6:00 p.m., Thursday, September 12, at Green Roots. And they want to meet with the community so we can figure out where it makes most sense to put some of these, what are they called? These little machines that capture the noise, where to put these places around the community. So if you have any interest, I encourage everyone to please come on Thursday, September 12, at 6:00 p.m. I just wanted to make sure to make that plug because that part is free, though the second part that Counselor Bishop is referring to does require approval of the City Council for money. And I understand that he's also not arguing with that money, about paying for that program as much as where it's coming from. And I actually agree with him. But I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about, we're recognizing that there's two different things happening here and inviting the public to come and attend on Thursday. Thank you.
Counselor Bishop, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hopefully, the chairperson will schedule this right away. I'm not trying to hold it up. And by the next meeting, we should hopefully have everything cleared up. So if she puts it on for the next meeting, before the next meeting, we'll be able to keep it moving. I'm not trying to hold it up, as I said. It's not the issue with the funding source.
Next order, that the Chelsea City Council increased the FY 2020 DPW Streets and Sidewalks Department original appropriation from $3,074,668 to $3,199,660. Next one, introduce financial order, FY 2020 Planning Department, original appropriation from $486,93 to $661,093 for an additional appropriation of $175,000.
Are we moving any of these to a subcommittee on conference?
Just a couple.
Okay.
The next financial order is Chelsea City Council increased the FY 2020 HHS Recreational Division Program Department original appropriation from $547,181 to $647,100. The warrant introduced by the city... Roll call.
Yep. Counselor Bishop moves to roll call vote for the city warrant for the elections.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown absent, Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Ray Cooperow.
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Next order introduced by Counsel Avizaneda, order that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss Rock Chapel Marine LLC, aka Eastern Salt Real Estate Holdings and City of Chelsea Waterfront Zoning and Plans.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Moved to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, and speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. I think many of the residents are aware, or if they've been paying attention to some of the news in the Chelsea record, that the Rock Salt Company, also known as Eastern Salt, recently purchased the Boston Hides and Furs property. And even prior to that, over the summer, I had introduced this order because they had recently bought, I think the address is 257 Marginal Street or 157, can't remember off the top of my head. But that is the property where Enterprise currently is holding its vehicles and is involved in a lawsuit over Chapter 90 licenser extension, which Green Roots is a litigant or participant in. There has been, I was in a meeting with Counselor Vido about a skate park, potential skate park, and the discussion is all about potential mitigation of this. And many may be surprised to know that Eastern Salt not only owns some of the property on the waterfront side, but also some of the homes along Suffolk Street, Pearl, and now with the purchase from Boston Hides, many of the homes all along Suffolk Street, along those empty homes, are now owned. So their real estate holdings is both extensive and very mixed. The city itself has been, for a number of years, in the process of looking at that area and coming up with a waterfront re-envisioning master plan, so to speak. And I think it behooves us to have a meeting with the Rock Salty owners to discuss both their holdings. In some cases, I would criticize them for the conditions of some of their properties and figure out what their plans are and how it... Is it cohesive with what the city is looking to do, basically? And what the residents in the area are also looking to see. So I wanted to have a discussion. And it's always been these sort of discussions sometimes happen one-on-ones or, you know, you meet with the owners. And I think it's rather, for the sake of transparency, I think it's just best that all of the city council, particularly since we're going to be voting for this new zoning in that area, we all participate in this. And we invite the city manager with his staff and the owners to talk about what that whole waterfront area is going to look like, potentially in the next 20 years. So I'm looking forward to having this scheduled and then having a discussing, discussion with the owners and my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido, that a subcommittee on conference be held to discuss the practicality, accessibility of our common marijuana zoning ordinance.
Under suspension, if there are no objections. Seeing none, so move, thank you, Counselor. Okay.
Next order introduced by Counselor Ray Cooperow, order that the city manager look at the given all senior citizen homeowner occupants in the city a 30% discount on their water bill.
Counselor Ray Cooperow?
Action of this, no objection?
No objections, so moved. Did you want to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a good thing to give seniors that live here a little break sometimes. I know I go back and say all the time to help the seniors. But someday, we are going to get old. So it's a good thing to try to help out the old people if we can. Try to keep them in our city. What's wrong with trying to, instead of them going to nursing homes because they can't afford to live? Because now a water bill is a mortgage. So we help them out and then return to help us by them being part of our community. Thank you.
Order introduced by Counselor Vido, order that the city manager create a planning committee to facilitate traffic management during all construction projects.
Under suspension, if there are no objections. Seeing none, so move, thank you, Counselor. Under suspension. If there are no objections, seeing none, so moved. Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vidal and Avellaneda. Whereas over one million evictions have been filed in Massachusetts over the past 30 years, and whereas tenants who make up 73% of Chelsea residents and 38% of Massachusetts residents face increasing burdens, burdens to securing safe, stable housing accommodations for themselves and their families, and whereas once an eviction case is filed, it becomes part of that tenant's eviction record, which documents the tenant's history of ever having sued or been sued by a landlord. And whereas in 2013, a Massachusetts trial court began placing eviction's record information online, making a tenant's court record history easily accessible to the public as well as tenant screening companies. And whereas regardless of fault, outcome, or underlying basis for a court filing, possessing any record of an eviction filing can present a serious barrier to a tenant's ability to secure housing. Whereas children and minors named in eviction proceedings bear permanent records that impact their search for housing when they become adults. And whereas today, tenants who become, who come to an agreement and settle with their landlord correct errors in their record or otherwise need support to alter the public availability and permanent available record, lack the means to do so. And whereas many landlords will routinely file a notice to quit simply as a matter of course at the conclusion of a tenancy, unaware of the collateral consequences of eviction records or the growth record of evictions they themselves are accumulating. And whereas legislation introduced by the Massachusetts Legislature by Representative Michael Moran and Senator Joseph Boncor, would protect tenants from being unfairly branded with an eviction record by sealing records until a judgment is rendered and ensuring the accuracy of the records. Whereas said legislation does not in any way alter the rights of landlords or property owners and allows all parties to exercise legal rights while moving on with their lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council goes on record in support of Senate Bill 824 and House Bill 3566, an act promoting housing opportunity and mobility through eviction ceiling.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes, I'd like to move on this suspension. If there's no objection? And speak on it, if I can?
Seeing no objections, so moved. You have the floor?
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Vidal for bringing this to the table, and I added my name as an ardent supporter. For those who are at home, there are two bills right now in the State House, a House version and a Senate version, Senate version 824 and House version number 3566. The bills that are similar in language would allow for children who were named in eviction processes to be, their names removed or sealed, those records sealed. It, the, when an eviction process is happening, and the, at the time the landlord is naming, the attorneys who write up eviction process are naming the children who are also members of a family who may be facing eviction, the unintended consequences of this, of coming to light, and that is that they're later on, when they're adults, unbeknownst to them, they have a X against them, when they apply for credit, that shows up in their record. When they themselves are old enough to really go out and get an apartment, that record stands out and, in some cases, doesn't allow them to get an apartment on their own. It negatively impacts their credit scores, car loans to go to get, to get a car to go to do a job, and such. Our state leaders and city leaders across the Commonwealth are recognizing this and asking that this does no longer happen, that children who are just named on a lease should not be victims of what happens to, you know, their single, could be a single parent, could be parents, job loss, whatever it may be. So, and I wanted to say a couple of things also, that what wasn't said in here was that our own Senator Saldivi-Demical was also one of the individuals who introduced it and sponsored it. And I also wanted to bring to light that we have these issues going on in our community, and one of the agencies that has been working for years on this simultaneously with trying to get a housing court here in Chelsea has been the Chelsea Collaborative and their tenants' rights group within. They've really been a champion on this issue. They've brought children who were negatively impacted in our community to speak on this, and I wanted to recognize them. And also bring to light that on September 11th, in this chamber, we will be celebrating their victory. And I know city manager Tom Ambrosino was part of that. He went to the State House to lobby for this, along with the area city officials, to now have a housing court date, dedicated housing court in Chelsea. No longer will individuals who are facing eviction have to go all the way into Boston, saves them a trip, and they can come here to Chelsea. So it's some great work, it needs to be recognized, but things like this, you don't realize the lasting effects of even an eviction can have on a family, and this will help stop that cycle, you know, that is continuing. So I hope my colleagues will appreciate that Counselor Vidal brought this up to our attention, and also that we're helping out, we're working with our colleagues across the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order introduced by Counselor Robinson, a request that the city manager provide an update on the Everett Avenue Speed Project.
Yes, we're under suspension. If I, I might be brief. Actually, I attended the Chelsea Pride football game yesterday, and the stadium, getting into the stadium, you had to walk over all the rocks and whatever else. I mean, the sidewalks aren't done. It seems like this project has been going on forever, and I'm just looking to get an update on when it's going to end. Like, right now, teachers can't park on Everett Avenue because of this project going on. And during the first day of school, I was asked to talk to Stop and Shop to provide 75 parking spots for the teachers for the one day at Chelsea High School.
Thank you.
Order introduced by Counselor Robinson, request to name the Chelsea Community Cable TV Building after Robert Duke Bradley.
We're under suspension.
Last order introduced by Counselor Robinson, request that the subcommittee conference be held with the Law Department to talk about city contracts, their starting and ending dates and penalties.
Shenanigans are under suspension, and this is an issue that I think it's time for us to work with these developers in giving them a starting date and ending date, and whether or not they meet the ending date. And if they can't meet the ending date, we should be thinking about how we can find them. And if they should end early, then maybe we should be able to pay them a bonus. I mean, I just think the street work is tying up too much traffic around the city when these projects are happening.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, public announcements, and let's save the moments of silence towards the end, because we've had a whole summer go by. Counselor Avellaneda?
A reminder, I just said it, that this Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, we will be hosting the judges and state officials for the opening or celebration of the opening of the housing court here. And also, just privately, personally, I just wish my dad a happy birthday. Happy 73rd birthday today.
Happy birthday. Counselor, what time? It's 8:00 or 8:30?
8:30.
8:30 in the council chambers on Wednesday, September 11th. Any other announcements? Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Madam President. So two announcements. One is a reminder, on September 15th, there will be the Celebration Founder's Day Celebration at the Walnut Street Synagogue, and that is in Walnut Street. So please come, that's at 2:00 PM. It's from 2:00 to 5:00. Come and celebrate and learn a little bit more about the temple and more about the culture there. So definitely 2:00 to 5:00. But before that, there's also same day on September 15th, there is a celebration, there's actually a parade in downtown, and it's celebrating the independence of five countries, Costa Rica, Honduras, Nicaragua, El Salvador, and Guatemala. And that parade is being sponsored by many local businesses, including the city and the Cultural Council of Chelsea, and that is Sunday, September 15th. It starts at noon time, and it will, the parade begins across from the Welsh, the Welsh family.
Funeral home.
Funeral home, sorry, funeral home. It starts there, and it ends at the park across from the police station. So definitely join the parade at noon, walk it through, enjoy Broadway, and then head over to the Founder's Day Celebration the same day at 2:00 PM to 5:00. So two events, same day, don't miss out.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson?
There's three events that day. Sunday morning at 9:00, the Chelsea Reach Program will be doing their annual bike event, starting at Eastern Salt Company and going up and around Admiral's Hill and back to the park. They usually raise this money so that during those kids who graduate that, this money goes for a graduation dinner for all these kids, because the money that they get from the schools can't be used in that manner. So they do the bike event in order to provide a graduation dinner for those who graduate.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Any other announcements? I want to remind everyone that this Thursday, September 12th at 6:00 PM at Green Roots, it's the sound study, and we're looking for community, for people in the community to come and share their opinions. Also, I want to remind everyone that Tuesday, September 24th, we're, yeah, we're having a primary election in District 2. It's the only district where there is a primary. Where are the polling locations for that? That's St. Rose and Williams School. So it'll be one district, one precinct at, what? St. Rose and Williams? No? No, no, no. One at St. Rose and one at the Williams School. That's Tuesday, September 24th. Yeah, primaries. What else? Anything else? Go ahead.
Okay. So one more, and it is on Tuesday, September 24th, 7:00 PM, there will be the Fourth Annual Overdose Vigil at the Chelsea City Hall Lawn. So please join us to remember loved ones that we've lost to drug addiction or any addiction. So again, that is on Tuesday, September 24th, at Chelsea City Hall Lawn at 7:00 PM. If it rains, it will be postponed to October 1st, but other than that, September 24th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, come, and you could add names of any loved ones to be read for this vigil, so.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia. Any more? What is this? Oh, yes, there's one more. On Thursday, September 26th, we're having the Chelsea City Manager and the Chelsea Interfaith Alliance. It's an event that we do, that we've been doing the past few years. It's from 6:00 to 7:00. It's a call to action, a community united in prayer. So that's Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM, right outside of City Hall. Moments of silence? I'd like to have a moment of silence for Natalie Varela, Norma Iris Cruz, and Jean-Marie Harkins.
Dr. Elijah Honblower Atkins passed away very recently. He was a great man, and, you know, we all hear about this one passed away or that one passed away. I was saddened to hear it, well, I was shocked, and I think the community was shocked also to hear of Dr. Atkins passing, better known as Skip Atkins, to the community at large. He serviced many, many of the elderly in the city and not elderly in the city. He was my mother and father's doctor. He went out of his way. He was a caring, loving man, only 70 years old, and, you know, he'll be sadly missed in the community of Chelsea.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. Counselor Avellaneda?
James Birmingham, firefighter for the City of Chelsea.
Just to add to Counsel Bishop.
Actually, he was my mother's doctor, but he also took care of about 80% of this community. We're Dr. Atkins patients. And actually, on September 28th, there's going to be a memorial service for him over in Cambridge, and there'll be some details coming up pretty soon in regards to that.
I might add to that, Dr. Atkins also served the City of Chelsea on the Board of Health for five years, and he was a great guy. And sad to say, two weeks after he passed, his mother also passed away, and it's a sad thing. I have a couple of others.
Oh, shoot them.
John Dolan from Cheever Street passed away. He was buried this past Saturday. I'd like to have a moment of silence for him, and also for Alex Harmon, who was the grandnephew of several Harmones that come from Chelsea. The whole family, actually, is from Chelsea. He was 20 years old and died in an auto accident, and he was buried this morning.
Any other moments of silence? See, no further business before us. We're adjourned.